You find the persons to be heard thing?
Mm-hmm.
Great, okay.
Sure.
I call the city council meeting to order for September 15th, 2014 at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions here, to my left is council members Mark Vanderlinde, Arlene Donahue, Bob Christians, and Tyler Avens, and our city engineer from WSB, Paul Hornby, is at the end. To my right is our interim city administrator, Mike Barone, our finance director, Brian Grimm, our community development director, David Abel, our city attorney, Ron Beatty, and our director of public safety, Paul Falls. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, subtractions?
I think we already made changes.
We didn't really change it, but we did get the additional information on enchanted. Any additions?
I'd like to add something under the business items. Can we do that now, or do we do that later?
No, you would do that now. What would you like to discuss?
You know, I would like under the business items to discuss the mayor's term.
Oh.
And the reason I'm bringing that up is because in talking to other cities, all the other cities, St. Bonnie, Mound, all the other ones have a two-year term versus a four-year term, and we're one of the few cities that have a four-year term versus a two-year term. And I think it would be beneficial, overall, I think it would be...
Can you talk into the mic, Bob?
I think it would be beneficial, kind of keep everybody more on their toes and more alert to what's happening in the community. I think there's so many things that have happened in the past that maybe could have had better attention of things that have happened in the past. And again, the other surrounding cities are doing two, so why are we doing four? I'd like to put it on for discussion.
Okay, so you want to put it under F, under business items?
E.
No, E is King Point Road assessments.
No, it's D.
You didn't get the update. She passed around a new one.
Okay. Did you not get the new one? So that will be number, or letter E?
Yep.
And that'll be the mayoral term. Okay, so we'll add that. Okay, can I have a motion for the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-oh. Okay, at this point in our meeting is the persons to be heard. Oh, we don't have any persons to be heard this evening. Oh, that's a change.
Yeah.
Alrighty, let's move on to special, this could be a rural wind meeting. Let's move on to special presentations, our thrilling and exciting roundabout video.
Paul, do you want to introduce it while we kind of queue it up here?
Sure, this, in, at the last meeting, we did talk about, you know, some of the issues we're having with the roundabout of at King's Point Road and Truck Highway 7, so we wanted to try to find a video perhaps to use as an educational tool that would be on the city's website, and one that was specific to multi-lane roundabouts. That's probably one of the more unique things about this roundabout versus some of the others that are on Highway 7, and driving them may be a bit confusing at times versus the single lane. And I think council member Vanderlinde had a very good point at the last meeting too, where he had mentioned driving large trucks through the multi-lane roundabouts and the technique, and what he had described he did is exactly what he should be doing, is just you take and you straddle the line, so you actually take up both lanes on the approach and into the roundabout, so you can maneuver in them. And cars are not supposed to yield to those larger trucks. So this video is one that looks at not only things, you know, how to drive a roundabout. Now, Brian and I were working on this, but my guess is it also shows you what not to do in the roundabout.
Should we dim the lights?
Important concepts of a roundabout is the yield principle. All vehicles must yield to traffic inside the roundabout as well as vehicles exiting. Drivers should only enter after sufficient space is available to maneuver safely into the roundabout. Defensive driving is appropriate in all situations. Make sure you are aware of other vehicles within the roundabout and be alert to drivers entering and exiting. When approaching a multi-lane roundabout, drivers must choose either the left or right lane before entering. The appropriate lane choice is based on the driver's desired exit or intended destination. For the multi-lane roundabout shown in this video, the left lane allows left turns, straight-ahead movements, and U-turns only. Allowable right lane maneuvers include immediate right turns or straight-ahead movements. In all cases, signs will direct drivers to the proper lane. Drivers using the left lane have the following options: left turns, Remember, when driving in the left lane, always maintain your lane position until you Vehicles using the right lane must make an immediate right turn or a straight-ahead movement. Remember to maintain your lane position until you exit. For a roundabout to function properly, everyone must follow the rules of the road. As you are about to see, failure to observe these rules will create unsafe conditions for you and other drivers. Before entering, always yield to traffic within the roundabout. Entering without sufficient space will cause an unsafe condition. In this situation, the vehicle in the right lane cuts off the driver in the left lane intending to exit. Be aware of other vehicles in the lane next to you, they may be unaware of your intended exit. Never change lanes while inside the roundabout. This car in the outside lane is attempting an improper U-turn. U-turns are only allowed in the left lane. Some roundabouts are specifically built with truck aprons to accommodate the turning radius of large trucks and trailers. Although truck aprons are provided, drivers should be aware that trucks may straddle both lanes. That is why it is important to never drive adjacent to or pass trucks while maneuvering through a roundabout. If you follow a truck into a roundabout, do not attempt to pass. When emergency vehicles approach, always give them the right-of-way. If you have not yet entered the roundabout, pull over to the right, allowing emergency Never stop while inside the roundabout. Instead, continue to your exit, then pull over to the right shoulder of the roadway, allowing emergency vehicles to maneuver around you. A roundabout crosswalk functions the same as an unsignalized crosswalk. Before entering the crosswalk, pedestrians should always look in the direction of oncoming traffic, find a gap in traffic, and then cross, although you have the right-of-way. Forcing traffic to stop suddenly can create unsafe conditions for both you and the drivers entering or exiting the roundabout. Most roundabouts include refuge islands, providing pedestrians with a safe route across opposing travel lanes. Bicyclists are encouraged to use crosswalks by walking their bikes. Only experienced bicyclists should ride through the roundabout. If you choose to enter a roundabout, the same rules of the road apply for a bike as an automobile. Now let's review the key points. As you approach a modern roundabout, remember these basic principles. Yield principle: yielding to all traffic circulating within the roundabout before entering is the single most important rule. Lane choice: drivers must make the appropriate lane choices based on their destination before driving through the roundabout. After you enter the roundabout, never overtake other vehicles or change lanes. Slow down: modern roundabouts are designed for speeds of 20 miles an hour or less. Drivers should be aware of the posted speed limit signs and slow down to safely enter. Large trucks and trailers: give special consideration to large trucks and trailers. Never pass or drive adjacent to a truck within a roundabout. Driving behind large trucks is preferred. Emergency vehicles: do not impede emergency vehicles. Pull over to the right if you are not in the roundabout, or move through and exit the roundabout to ensure emergency personnel get to their intended destination without undue delay. Pedestrians: utilize the modern roundabout's refuge island. This allows pedestrians to cross both directions of traffic safely. Bicyclists: bicyclists should use the pedestrian crosswalk. Only experienced bicyclists should ride through the roundabout. Following these rules of the road will help you drive through a modern roundabout correctly and safely.
Well, thank you. Were we still talking about restriping or not?
At this point, I did talk to our design engineer. He has worked with MINDAT extensively, not only this roundabout but others. This one has some unique characteristics to it, but before they would consider restriping, MINDAT wants to see how these are going to perform, and it's probably a little too soon to do that.
Okay.
And I know at the last meeting, there was some discussion about some of the frustrations that people have heard of or experienced within the roundabout. I think from MINDAT's standpoint, I can't speak for them, but it's my opinion that they're going to want us to wait a little longer after talking to our designer on it, to see how they happen operationally. Oftentimes, MINDAT will look at incidents such as crashes, are there more crashes or fewer crashes? And they'll look at that as one factor. Now, the one thing with this roundabout is we don't have pedestrians on the surface. That's at least a positive with that one, so...
Yep. Okay, any other questions about the roundabout? Okay, I believe Brian is up.
Yeah, and I'm going to just make a few comments before Brian actually kind of dives into the budget presentation. As you know, tonight, we're going to pass a preliminary levy in order to meet the county deadline of September 30th, and then slated for tonight is a general fund increase of 4.1 percent, so we thank the council for these increases. I won't really go back and discuss previous budgets, previous years, but what I am encouraged about is, overall, that, you know, our economy has been improving in the last year or two, the city is growing, and then home value prices are trending up, so this will all help impact, lessen the impact of our budget increase going forward in 2015. Staff has held about eight budget meetings as we sat down and tried to shape the 2015 budget, and then council staff have had some very honest and open discussions in the past few months at our special meetings in order to discuss the 2015 budget. There's still a lot more work to be done in future years. We have many needs in roads and utilities and other demands that go along with being a growing city, but just, as council probably already knows, but so the public knows, that city staff is committed to being effective and efficient with our tax dollars. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian, and he can kind of go through the budget presentation for 2015. Brian?
Sure. Thanks, Mike. I'm Madam Mayor, Councilor. The one thing I just wanted to clarify, I think, is the 4.1 percent that Mike referenced, that is our preliminary total tax levy increase. That would be the, you know, capital, roads, general fund, operations, everything together, so just wanted to make that clarification. As, like Mike's already stated here, we have to certify the preliminary levy by Tuesday, September 30th, so that's what we're looking to take action on tonight. Our 2015 budget goals that we've sort of tried to stay honed in on is, you know, obviously the first one is to ensure the city's financial stability. I think we've done a really good job over the past several years, you know, as far as making sure we have healthy fund balances and balancing our needs there, addressing capital improvement needs, and just making sure our capital improvements, being that I think this budget does that. You know, every year, we look at our staffing and benefit levels in conjunction with our service levels to make sure that we're doing good there, and one of the things that is outlined in the memo is the mid-year add-back of the lieutenant position, the police lieutenant position, and then the funding of the pavement management plan, which is important, I think, to all of us, so... So basically, what the PowerPoint's doing here is summarizing, this was pages, you know, four through 15 of the packet. Here is the, you know, council, I know you've seen these slides, you know, a lot of this is for the public at home here, but you can see our previous couple of years, few years from 2012 to 2014, our levy has stayed flat. What the changes in 2015 are, basically, the debt fund levy is going up to fund some equipment purchases through an equipment certificate, and then the other major change is $100,000 for additional road maintenance, trying to phase in, and I'll talk about that a little later, our pavement management plan. So those are the two main changes, and what the, basically, the bottom line is that the total net levy is at $3,935,000, with the fiscal disparities of $101,000 taken off, so I believe that number is actually still, I mean, we show the trend later, but it's lower than 2010, I think it's even lower.
It's down to 2006.
Six, yeah.
This tax will be at...
Yeah, it's either '06 or '07, yeah, sorry, it's right around that timeframe.
It's between.
Yep, yep. And, yeah, here's just a, I guess, a graph that shows the last, you know, back to 2009, that was when our tax levy was at, for lack of a better term, I guess, the highest point, or, so you can see, we've, as we just talked about, you know, even by going back to right around $4 million, we're still, you know, $600,000 or so lower than we were in 2009, so I think the city's done a very good job of doing that, but knowing that we need to invest in a few things this year and make just a, what I would call, a reasonable levy increase. In conjunction with that, our general fund is our biggest share of our expenditures, and that still is below, you know, pre-2009 levels, as far as our general fund, back then was a little over 4.5 million, and we're still below that as far as our, you know, spending on our police and our streets and all those, you know, general fund activities that, you know, our main core services we provide. This goes back into, this is from our last audit, you know, so it's through 2013, and it shows that we've been in that 50 to 60 percent range as far as what's called our general fund fund balance reserve, so state audit recommends being between 35 and 50 percent, so we're actually a little above that, which, I mean, so we do have, you know, a healthy fund balance and able to, we've been able to, you know, use, allocate that for some different things, as far as some additional roads or not having to levy for some, you know, equipment in years past, so we've done that, and I think we've been judicious with that, so... Here's our CIP, and you can see, I think we're going to spend a little, as far as our capital purchases for like, you know, trucks for public works and police squads and such, so we're budgeted to spend about $370,000 in 2015 here. Some of these other amounts, obviously, are per the plan for 2015 and 19, will be looked at each year as far as some need. You can see it's ebbed and flowed a little bit, when the economy was a little slower, we tried to cut back a little bit and just, you know, just like everyone did, I guess, so we're just looking at making some investments in our equipment, again, just to make sure we stay on that proper replacement schedule. Phase into the pavement management plan, what we're trying to do is get to this $900,000 here in 2019. Right now, we spend about $350,000 as of 2014 on our pavement management plan, so what we're doing in that, that ties into that levy sheet I was showing earlier, as far as trying to up that about $100,000 each of the next few years, and then even $125,000 after that, and I think that's a prudent way to get to where we need to be, and we also have some MSA, municipal state aid dollars we get, so we just have to balance tax levy dollars with other financing sources such as state dollars to make sure we're staying on top of our roads. Here's, I guess, in, almost taking the previous slide and summarizing it into one slide as far as our tax levy, you can see it's went down from 2010 and stayed the same, and now there's that, you know, basically about 4 percent increase up, and one thing, I know Mike touched on it earlier, of that 4 percent increase, roughly about half, you know, or close to 2 percent is almost made up of capturing our growth, our new homes within the city, so really, you're not, existing homeowners shouldn't see, you know, that full 4 percent, it should be something closer to, you know, if they had a, the median valuation increase should be something closer to 2, so I just wanted to point that out. But this just shows also our, you know, reserves, we've been able to use some of our reserves to keep our tax levy, you know, manageable, or, you know, reasonable, and but also then keep our fund balance percentage, knowing that, you know, there's, we want to not just have that keep building and building, so it's a balance between all of those items, and I think we've done a good job of maintaining that balance. This, I think this is a very important graph, as far as what people were paying in property taxes in 2010, I mean, this is taking a property that was valued at $500,000 in 2010, and we know that property experienced some valuation decreases, I mean, that was just the way, you know, the housing market was going, so, but we also did decrease our tax levy during those times, so you can see that that property owner, even with the, you know, the slight increase for the 2015, is basically paying $175 less than what they were paying in 2010, so obviously, that five-year trend, most, you know, more people have more money in their pockets, or have paid less for city taxes based on what the city's done, you know, done the last several years. This is just more of a year-to-year trend, what people, what the residential properties are seeing, when working with the county assessor's office, the average valuation increase is about 5.5 percent, so if they have that valuation increase, and with the tax levy that is proposed, you can see their value will go up between 2014 and 15, and then here's the respective tax amounts page, so you can see it's, you know, for the $350,000 property, you know, it's basically a difference of what, you know, they'll see a $22 increase on their property taxes, you know, less than $2 a month, so that slide just shows it with a little, if you have more of a larger increase, but, I mean, that's just the way the property tax formula works. Some of our main assumptions or commitments, you know, in our budget, some things were, you know, sort of, I guess, locked into our contractually, and we have our mound fire and our St. Bonnie fire, which almost had pretty, you know, modest increases there. We have our labor contracts with, you know, our unions as well as our non-unions, and, you know, we're estimating for the salaries and, you know, insurance and stuff, about $70,000 there. I referenced earlier the mid-year start of the staff police lieutenant, and that's, you know, we've discussed that at the last several meetings. Our funding sources for our capital improvements, pavement management plan, and then I think under staff reports, we've scheduled out later in the agenda meetings, talking about the surface water, water, sewer, because those individual utility funds or enterprise funds are, you know, separate from the tax levy funds or the general funds, and we'll be talking about those in October and November here. I guess, yeah, to summarize what was in the packet, we want to improve the resolution, I guess we got that under business items here in a minute by the deadline. We've had multiple meetings, as Mike referenced, with both at the staff level and on staff and council, I think we had a pretty good consensus at that September 2nd meeting. Basically, the main components of the increase are the roads, you know, it's about 2.6 percent, and then the capital is about 1.5 percent. We've, the general fund, we pretty much kept flat by using some, you know, reserves and doing some, you know, saving where we could and that type of thing, so, and then the last point is that, obviously, this is the ceiling we're setting, so whatever, the final budget, you know, can even still come up again, you know, at, between now and, one of the agenda items we'll set is the public comment date of, in December, but this is the maximum we're setting, so it can be, you know, stay the same or be reduced, but it can't be increased between now and when the final budget levy are adopted, so that's what I have for the presentation, so, councilors, any comments or...
Any comments or questions?
I think it looks good.
Okay, so otherwise, yeah, I guess we'll have consent agenda, and we'll be back in a minute here, there's a few action items that we have, so...
Brian, I think one of the things that we have to do is, in discussing the budget here, when we talk about a 4 percent increase in real numbers, you know, in real numbers, it's minimal, and I think we also have to show the fact, as you did on that slide, for years and years, our taxes in Minatrista have increased year by year by year by year up until 2010. In 2010, as you showed in the slide, they started to go level out and actually go down. So what you're asking for right now with this increase, still with the increase, correct me if I'm wrong, but still with this increase, our taxes per resident, my tax that I'm paying to the city of Minatrista is still less than it was four years ago. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, unless you had some major, the only people that wouldn't be able to say that is if they moved into the last four, you know, obviously, they weren't here at that time, or if they did some major improvements to their, you know, property or something.
Right, right, but I mean, as far as valuation goes, so...
Yeah, I mean, if you just had your house, you're still, you know, didn't make any major changes to it, yeah, I mean, they would, a vast majority are paying, yeah, less.
If I didn't know how the taxes were calculated, and I was a resident, and all at once I seen somewhere, I seen in the paper that there's a 4 percent increase, I'm going to go, what the heck, 4 percent increase? But in reality, I could live with that and I'd have no problem with that if I realized that in reality, in real numbers, it's probably zero, at most 2 percent, and still less than it was four years ago.
It's less than it was in 2007.
It's less than it was in 2000, I know up until a point in time, it raised, it taxes, my taxes went up every year, I've been living here for 20 years, my taxes have gone up until every year, and I didn't really notice a difference until about 2010, where it started to level off or go down. So the key is, and our job, is to communicate the whole story. I don't want another water issue thing where there was misinformation put out, information that wasn't correct, or the rest of the story, I want to make sure the information that we put out is accurate, so we don't have this second guessing and all this misinformation that was printed in the paper and other places that have gone around. That hurt us. We need the facts, we need the facts showed, and how you did it, and you did a great job here, I commend you on that, because you showed the chart.
Yeah, no, and that's from a staff perspective, I mean, I tried to, whoever, anyone I talk to, if they try to say my taxes are too high or whatever, I pull out these slides and, you know, or different information, and explain to them that our taxes have gone down, and sometimes if they try to, you know, the tax rate is different than the actual, I mean, this is real dollars.
Right, right. And I understand what I mean, I seen in the paper at least six times, $5 million on the water treatment, which is a bunch of crap, we all know that, it never was, but I seen it in the paper six times. I want to make sure that we're showing again here that the story is presented correctly, that really, what does that mean? It still means I'm paying less than I did four years ago.
Definitely.
More than four years ago.
More than four years ago. So that's an important part, that we need to communicate that to our residents and our taxpayers who are paying the bill.
Yeah, one thing I always try to get across, too, is that, and people sometimes mistake or misunderstand, they're told, we control basically about a quarter of the tax bill.
Right, you got the school, you got the county, you got everything else.
And the county, and the county.
But we're talking about the city.
Yeah, yeah, our, yeah, if you look at, when you get your actual statement that comes in November, look at what you're paying for the city in comparison to the other ones and look at...
And we've done a great job, no question, and you did a good job of presenting that. Now we just have to get that to the public, to the taxpayer, and communicate that way.
And I like the fact that you went over the values, because the one thing that our residents have told us all and over is if we're going to do a tax increase, it's about roads, they're okay with it.
Yeah, and that's been on, too, and here we're looking here, that we're taking $100,000, we've got comments, and I've had comments, and I know the rest of us have had comments, the roads are in the best shape they've ever been, ever, in Minatrista, but yet, we still are going to increase it by another $100,000 to even prove it better. So anybody who's had anything about the roads, I mean, it's, it's great, I mean, we're doing what our people want, we're listening, and that's what we want to get across.
Alrighty, so we'll pick that up again once we get to the consent agenda. So let's move along to the consent agenda. I do want to remove the meeting minutes, A and B, and there's just, were a few things that need to be corrected, and can we bring them back to the next meeting?
Yes, we can, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on the consent agenda they want to pull?
No.
Nope. Alright, so entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda without...
Okay, now we're on to public hearings, which there are none. Business items, we're back to budget.
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council, I've got, there's a few agenda items that go with approving our two thousand fifteen tax levy and they start on, I believe it's page ninety-three of the packet here. If I can get my screen back up here. The first item is to approve the two thousand fifteen preliminary tax levy and the amount that we want to approve is on page, let's see, of ninety-four of the packet. And that includes all those different items for the general fund, the roads, our different bond, you know, the existing bond issues. And the total amount that we are looking at to do for the, for the gross levy would be four million thirty-six dollars, nine hundred and twenty, four million thirty-six, nine twenty-seven is what I'm looking to, when that actually reduces down by about a hundred and one thousand, once the fiscal disparities, the, the dollars we get from the county. So I guess what, if it pleases the council, we'd be looking for a motion to adopt the gross levy to certify to the county in that amount of that four million nine thirty-six, or four million thirty, four million thirty-six, nine twenty-seven. As presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. Okay, then we have to approve the debt levy at a hundred percent, so we're paying our creditors.
Yep, yeah, yeah, basically, what we've done there is we've, we've been able to have a healthy enough fund balance in our debt funds that we statutorily can levy for a hundred percent of our principal interest and payments, but we've been able to levy a hundred percent. I think we've had a really good collection rate on our taxes here and within the city. So that's allowed us to, basically it allows us to save about thirty-five thousand in ta, you know, tax levy by a lot, levying for the a hundred percent. But it's something that the county requires us to adopt a, a resolution if we're gonna do something less than the hundred five percent and then we send that along with, with our levy. So we'd be looking for a motion for that, or to adopt that resolution.
Counsel, any questions or?
And that, yeah, so the recommended action would be adopt the attached resolution, that's I believe on page ninety-six, to levy for a hundred percent of the two thousand fifteen bond payments on existing debt issues.
It's on my ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Yeah. The resolution's on ninety-six.
Oh, sorry, okay.
The council action's on ninety-five, the motion.
Sure.
Can I say so moved?
Yes, you can.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Okay, approved two thousand fourteen date for public comment on the two thousand fifteen levy budget. What date are we considering?
The dates that would fall along the calendar lines would be, they have a, you can't have it before November twenty-fourth, so it's anytime after that. And I think our only council meeting that's on the docket right now would be December first, that's, or seven PM would be the date that would work, a date and time that is in the packet to, to set for our public comment date for discussion of the two thousand fifteen budget and tax levy to be adopted.
I won't be here.
What's that?
December first. So should I not vote on it?
No, you can vote.
No, no, you, you're the council.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion for December first.
I'll make a motion to have December first at seven o'clock as a public comment date for discussion of the two thousand fifteen budget and tax levy to be adopted.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Okay, next item is to accept quotes and award the contract for Enchanted Lane Temporary Gravel Rock Roadway removal restoration. And we just got this, this was not in our packet, so.
Correct, this should be a hard copy in the.
In your packets or in that folders.
It'd be a paper copy on your.
This is not it then?
Just like this.
So we did open quotes last week for the removal of temporary roadway, which is largely a three-inch minus rock from Enchanted Lane. We did receive two quotes. They ranged in the amount from forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars to one hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. The lowest quote was received by, or received from Mingar Construction for their quoted amount of forty, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And we, if the council wished to act on this, we recommend awarding the quote quoted amount to Mingar Construction.
Any questions, counsel?
Yeah, well, I'm assuming the other line, the bottom line on that engineer estimate, when you originally put this together, you had figured it would be forty-three, one fifty, is that what you said?
That's correct, yes.
So in other words, in your estimate at the time is forty-three, the original forty-nine.
Correct. Yeah, the, we had about five or six contractors we sent this out to and we were actually hoping to get about three quotes, we got two.
Huge difference.
The second low quote received, I think, may have done that as an exercise, so we had more than one quote, but I think the construction season we're having with it being compressed due to the weather we had in May and June has contributed to that. But they are, you know, so if you want the work done, there is some available. We did try to take that into account in the engineer's estimate. We also will be meeting with FEMA this week to ask to take a look at that and hopefully get some dollars back to refund the city for the placement of the rock and removal of it as well.
Okay, any other questions? I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion to accept the quotes and award the contract to Mingar Construction Incorporated for, for a quoted amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. And can you follow up with the roads on that?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. Now we're on, I hope I have the right one, number C, resolution, receiving quotes and awarding contract for the two thousand fourteen gravel surfacing project that is in our packet.
Yes.
I do try not to have two projects with some similar wording on the same agenda, so that might have been part of the confusion of why you can get one in your packet. However, we did receive quotes for the two thousand fourteen gravel surfacing project. There is a, a description of the roadways that are included in the project area. The capital improvement plan has about eighty thousand dollars set aside for this work. We did get some good bids. We had, whoops, excuse me. We had a good response on the quotes and, well, actually I shouldn't say that, we had one responder to the quotes. However, the, the amount of the bid was actually quite good, it's better than what we anticipated. That was from Valley Paving out of Shakopee for their low quote amount of sixty-three thousand one hundred dollars. And that covers the roadways identified. I should mention that, as recommended by the Roads Committee, that this project includes one hundred percent crushed granite for the class five that we're putting down. That was the material of choice. So I think those bids, being that material comes out of St. Cloud, those bids were actually very good. So if the council wishes to award this project, we recommend you do so to Valley Paving Inc. for their quoted amount of sixty-three thousand one hundred dollars.
And they can get this done this fall?
Yes, it's to be completed this year.
Okay. All right. So let's, for the audience, those roads are going to be Rolling Hills Drive, Metaview Lane, Hillsdale Drive and Sunset Drive.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, counsel?
I'll make a motion to approve the quotes and award the contract as stated here to.
Valley Paving?
Valley Paving.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we had an earlier discussion about the Kings Point Road assessment revenue item and who is going to provide the verbal on that?
I think Brian's going to take a crack at that, Mayor.
Sure, I can try. No, I think I got it. You got it, I got it. Thanks, Mike and Madam Mayor and Council. So we had brought a work, item to the special meeting to talk about, now that the Kings Point Road, um, street project is, should be wrapping up here shortly, or I think it's just down to punch list items to, the assessment portion now has to, are kicking, or at least the financing portion of it. And one of the questions, we know that the, the developer has, we have a petition and waiver agreement and they're be paying their portion through special assessments, but the question that came up then, I think both the staff and the council level, was to talk about the properties, the existing properties that had the water stub ins and what to do with those, whether to specially assess those right off the bat, assess them with interest accruing, without interest accruing, or, or to look at more of a connection charge through the chapter four forty-four process, which would be at a later date, once the, the property owner decided to connect. And the consensus of the council and staff seemed to be, or was, that we should recoup those through connection charges. It was about, on this project, on the Kings Point Road, it's about sixty thousand or so, that we would look to, to connect or collect at a later date, once those properties chose, I guess if they chose to, to connect.
So if they never chose, they'd never be charged? If they developed their property and then attached to the water treatment, then they would, or water system, then they would be?
Correct. So, yeah, so that's, the purpose of the Kings Point Road, I think we have a, a decision or our, our direction to, to move forward there and then can come back, as we talked about with the, just the special assessments, like at the second meeting, October four, the, the developer portion.
Great. Any further questions?
And the connection fee, as I understand it, would be twenty-seven hundred dollars per parcel, is that correct?
That's a current.
That's a current.
That's a current one, yeah, this one may have to be, I think we just, we, the discussion of the meeting was there may be an added line item to the fee schedule or some amount. Once this project was all wrapped up, there might be an amount that then would be split between those parcels. And then we talked about even a little, I guess, and we can decide that at a later date, whether there's even some sort of inflationary component or something that would be then handled through an ordinance, through the, through the fee schedule, so, yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, letter E is mayoral term. I'll let you.
Well, this came up because I've had some different discussions with different people in our surrounding cities. And I should be more aware of that after living in the Minatrista here now for almost twenty years. I guess what bothers me, and this is why I'd like to open it up for discussion, our neighboring cities on the mayoral term is a two-year term. St. Bonnie, I mean, I just thought, for example, Rick Wybo was just up for election and he is again, two-year term, same as Mound and, and other surrounding cities. And I look back, and this has kind of bothered me, because it kind of sees if you go into a four-year term, to me, as I see it, maybe the mayor gets a little bit complacent. And what kind of hit home is the fact that, that why did it take now until this last year to address the infrastructure problem, for mainly the infrastructure problem of the water treatment? This water treatment problem didn't happen just this last year, from what I've been heard and what I know, I'm not, of course, I'm not on city water, I'm on well water, but this has been going on for years and years and years. Did anybody listen to it? Why wasn't anything done until now? That's one of the areas that I take a look at. I look at poor Hoffman. That problem that she had just didn't happen now. Now, I don't know if it's gonna change anything by going from a, changing the structure of a mayor's ele, uh, election on a two-year versus a four-year, but I think maybe it'll take out some of the complacency and I think over the years, there's some infrastructure problems that were never and should have maybe been brought to the attention or should have, somebody should have done something about it. Why are we doing it all now? Okay? That's my thought and that's where, where I'm coming from. And it's not just mine, but it's, it's some of my friends that I work with in the surrounding cities. I'm excited. I'm excited about the fact that in several meetings that I have, as you know, I'm also on the advisory board for Mound Fire Department, for the St. Bonnie Fire Department, and I've had numerous comments from both St. Bonnie and Mound. Guys, we've never had as good of a working relationship with Minatrista as we do today. That's a good feeling. That's great. So I'm happy about that. So thank you, staff. Thank you, Mr. Falls. I've got a special compliment for you. Your name was brought up in one of the conversations that I have, that it was great working for, with you. So thank you, everybody. I'm excited about that. So that's one of the reasons I'm thinking to myself, why are we on a four-year mayoral term when everybody else is on two? That's just how I feel about it.
How long has it been, four-year?
You know, that's a good question, council member. I don't know exactly the default and I'll let Mr. Beatty chime in a little bit on this because this came up, I don't know how long ago, a few months ago, in an internal discussion. The default for Plan A cities like ourselves is two years. So at some point in time, this council, don't know how many years ago, I guess we could find out, changed it to four. You can change it back, it's too, it's too late to change it back for next year. And it really doesn't matter because we do have a special election coming up this fall in, in concurrence with the general election for the mayoral seat. And that person that takes office will finish the final two years of mayor, old Mayor Fisher's term. So we will have a mayor for two years, based on the new election. You could, in the future, or future council could, could change it, you could always change it back. So the thinking was, when this came up, that, I think we had missed the deadline. You have to, there has, it has to do with when the primary is and how many weeks or months before the primary, you have to have that on your, if, if you want to have like a ballot question. And we missed that deadline when the discussion came up. But like I said, it's kind of a moot point because we do have a, basically a two-year mayoral, mayoral term coming.
Right now, this will be changed for the, would be the two thousand six, no, what would be the next one? Yeah, when it could be done, it could be changed for two thousand sixteen.
That is correct.
It could be done for the two thousand sixteen.
You could change it tonight for twenty sixteen, but of course, depending on what happens in this election this fall and for those that may take office next year, they could change it back. So the idea was, let's just leave it for now and if the council in January or February or March of next year wants to change it, they can go right and change it. But it doesn't really matter, like I said, because you're gonna have somebody in place in the mayoral position for two years coming up. And it'll be somebody different than Mayor Hunt, so.
Well, you mean, it would be a trial to go back to the two-year, because that's what you're going to?
Well, that's what we're doing right now.
That's what you're doing for two more years.
So if it doesn't work, then that next council could turn it back to a four-year.
I don't know why we, why we couldn't go ahead with it. I don't know. That's my feeling and again, it's not just something that, it's from discussions I've had with our neighbors.
Mike, I think Mike's point is that if we do make a motion tonight, it wouldn't have any effect until later. So he's just saying defer it to the next council, because this council could change up or it could, well, will change up.
Yeah, for sure you'll have one new person on that.
What's your thought, Mark?
Well, they could always change it back too. It's not that.
Well, and that's what I was gonna say, is I think I agree with Mike, that I'd hate to see staff go through, change this thing and in January it changes and then the new council goes, no, we want four years, so then the staff's gotta go back and change it back to four-year. So why don't we just wait, see what happens? It ain't gonna matter.
You'll have a two-year mayor.
Right, you're gonna have a two-year mayor for the next two years anyway. Next council could decide what they want to do and we're not wasting a bunch of staff time. Makes sense?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to bring it up.
Well, I think it's a good thing to consider, because our neighbors, Shorewood, just did a, was looking at going to a four-year and decided to stay two-year. And I do think it keeps the mayor accountable.
You know, I don't know, I, I just feel good because I, we got a good relationship with the surrounding, what I consider are cities of Mound and St. Bonnie. And so I, that's why I brought it up, you know, it's.
And I think that these type of things should be brought up. I think these are things that should be discussed.
It should definitely be brought up and, but I just think that Mike's right, that we should just delay any.
Until.
Motion until the council set, because it wouldn't be, it'd basically just be throwing it out there.
Yeah.
And then creating work.
Yep.
Alright, Dar, well, but thanks for bringing it up, Bob, because I think these kind of things should be discussed. So let's go to the claims, any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the claims.
Excuse me, I'll make a motion to accept the claims as written.
I'll second them. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh. Council reports, we have Police Communications Committee meeting tomorrow.
That's correct.
LMCD, we just approved Jay Soule to take over the LMCD position, and the water treatment subcommittee no longer exists. We also have a, Mike and I have a meeting, our monthly meeting with St. Bonnie on Wednesday morning at eight-thirty. Mark?
I have none.
Arlene?
We had a park commission meeting last week, and there was a request by Margaret Davis that we consider putting into our expenditures for maybe next year, a thousand dollars to be used for plants and possibly labor that would take place in decorating the Minatrista signs that are on there, where she has been doing this for years and years and years. But she said that they could use some funding for that, and I just want to mention it, we have it considered, could we take it out of park funds?
I'm gonna ask either my finance guy or the community development director.
The park dedication fund is for the capital, more capital type items, this would be more of a maintenance type item, so, but, so not the actual park dedication fund, but certainly an area of the park maintenance fund is what it would have to be incorporated into if it was the desire of the council to do that.
Yeah, the general fund, yeah, parks operational budget, which.
I just wanted to mention it, because it was brought up.
Yeah, we should discuss this in more detail. Okay, Bob.
I'd ask you all to speak up a little bit, if you hear you, this is fair.
Okay, sorry about that. There are good parts. Okay, so Arlene suggested that we take the recommendation of the Parks Commission, that they would like to see a thousand dollars added to the park maintenance budget to help plant flowers, labor and material in our signs, in our city. And Margaret Davis has been doing that, I believe, out of her own pocket for years, if that's correct, am I correct?
Um, there's been a, I, I guess there's been a combination of sorts, yes, throughout the years, as I understand it, yes.
Okay, so we should, we should probably bring that back to another meeting to talk about how that could all work.
Okay.
We do want to keep our signs beautiful. Okay, anything else, Arlene?
Nope, that's it, I'm out.
Bob?
Well, first of all, when I spoke earlier, could you hear me? Because most people say I'm awful loud. A lot of people say, hey, you're, I'm a little outspoken and loud, okay. Uh, this is exciting, this is really, really exciting, WCC, standing for West Tonka Community Commerce. Minatrista has been a member of that for a couple of years now, and this next Monday night, this next Monday night, one week from today, at five-thirty, from five-thirty to seven, there will be a meeting that will be held at Allen Almas, okay? And what's exciting about this.
I think it's two weeks, twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, I'm sorry, it is two weeks from now, yeah, the twenty-ninth, sorry, but what's exciting about it is it's a community effort, and what's gonna happen is Mayor Hunt is gonna give everybody at WCC an update of what's going on in Minatrista. And then, of course, also will Mayor Hanus, and the mayor of Spring Park, the mayor of Orno, and we also will have a special guest, the mayor of St. Bonnie. So that's two weeks from tonight, five-thirty to seven, I'm excited, I'm, I'm excited to wait for it, and all the cities together will give their update of what's happening in the community. So if you're a member of WCC, don't miss it, it's gonna be great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks for the plug. Okay, Tyler?
I have no updates.
Okay, staff?
Um, I have a couple of items, one is on your, on your agenda, I'll start with the other one, though. Um, just FYI, we had Mr. Bill Penniker stop in today and drop off some tickets, so we're now able to sell tickets for the upcoming Tonka Brew Fest in early November. The city, as you know, is, is a sponsor of the event this year, I don't remember the exact cost, I want to say forty dollars per ticket, but I think they have six hundred tickets, and last year they completely sold out, so I do know we have a hundred here, and we'll be posting that on our website to say that those tickets are available, I think they're gonna have them here next weekend, but they got them here this week, so those, those sales are being, are underway. Uh, the other thing is, just a reminder for our council, is that we've kind of plunked out a few topics for the remaining special meetings for 2014, as you see them there, October sixth, we're gonna be discussing surface and stormwater, October twentieth, the sewer fund and the water rates, and November tenth, parks and trees, and then November seventeenth, the financial management plan, so that'll kind of get us right up until the December date, when the last, or only meeting in December, when we have to pass our budget, you know, we're gonna go through all these things at our special meetings, we've kind of polished off the budget for now, and we could certainly bring it up if need be, but we thought we'd earmark those special meeting topics for those dates, and hopefully the council is good with that, with that schedule, so. I don't know if there's anything else our staff has that they want to share, any questions from the council?
Any questions, counsel? Okay, then I'll entertain my favorite motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. This meeting is adjourned.